A quorum being present, the special town meeting will come to order. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise. Pastor Marlena Schmidt of the First Parish Church Congregational will give the invocation, and I ask that you remain standing after the invocation to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you all, if you wish, to join me in a moment of centering and prayer. Let us pray. Oh God, whose truest name is love, we come before you this evening from differing traditions, maybe differing viewpoints about faith, yet we come with a united purpose: to ground ourselves in our shared values and to make decisions that will stand us in good stead for the future. Oh God, open our minds and our hearts to the issues being discussed. Help us to listen to each other with respect and to stretch our individual perspectives to consider the merits of ideas different than the ones we might hold. Help us each and all to speak with clarity, civility, and passion in a way that honors both ourselves and those with whom we may not see eye to eye. And most importantly, oh God, help us find together a way forward that builds up our community for the good of all.
Thank you, Mariam. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. Our usual practice is to remember those citizens who have died during the prior year in a memorial resolution adopted at the annual town meeting in April. In recent months, however, we've lost four Manchester residents whose exceptional contributions to the town merit recognition tonight. Al Creighton was a co-founder and longtime leader of the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. He was a champion of land preservation and worked tirelessly to make it happen throughout New England as a board member of many conservation organizations. Here in Manchester, he served on the Finance Committee and the 1950s School Building and Planning Committee. Adele Irvin defined citizenship in Manchester. She was a faithful town meeting member whose comments often swayed the debate and whose motion for the previous question often ended it. Adele attended virtually all meetings of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee and could be counted on to volunteer at the town election every year. John Gilmore was born in Manchester and lived here most of his life, a townie's townie. He was a member of the Water and Sewer Commission, the Finance Committee, and he chaired the Board of Selectmen for many years. Archie Southgate was my predecessor as moderator, serving for 18 years. Before that, he chaired the planning board, and a short time after he retired as moderator, he was elected to the Board of Selectmen, which he also chaired. In my first years as moderator, he was a mentor as well as a friend. I ask that you observe a moment of silence in honor of these extraordinary Manchester I'll briefly state our customary procedural points. If you want to speak, please wait to be recognized, wait for a mic, and give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. For those who are here for the first time, I'm Alan Wilson. I ask that you stand when you speak, if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. Speakers should remember to direct their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. And speakers should limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. The seats on the floor of the gym and the cafeteria and most of the seats in the bleachers are reserved for voters. If you're not a voter and not one of the people who've received my permission to be here in order to speak, you should be seated in the section of the bleachers marked for visitors, which is at the left-hand, my left-hand end. And if you are a voter and you're sitting in the visitors' section, you should move to another seat. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting. But if the motion for the previous question, the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under the rules we follow, it's not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. I will accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept this motion from one who makes a statement on the merits of an issue and then immediately moves to close the door on contrary views. You should have picked up a pink card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator; Christina St. Pierre, Town Clerk; Andrea Mainville, the Town Accountant; Ed Connelly, the Police Chief; Pamela Bowden, excuse me, the Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District; Avi Urbus, Business Manager of the School District; John Willis, Principal of Memorial School; members of the School Building Committee from Essex, including Annie Cameron, the Committee Co-Chair; Jake Foster; Charlie Hay; Lisa O'Donnell, who is also a member of the Essex Board of Selectmen; and Tyler Verdon. In addition, consultants to the school district, including Steve Brown of Doran Whittier and Jim La Posta of J.C.J. Architecture; Rick Manley and Kara Adams with the law firm of Lock and Lord; Bond Counsel to the Regional School District. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if that becomes appropriate. We also have with us additional guests from Essex who do not expect to speak: members of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Regional School Committee, and the Essex Town Moderator. You are all welcome here. I ask that you mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios, formerly Cape Ann TV, and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight: the registrators of voters, Eileen Buckley and Bruce Warren; assisting the registrars in checking in voters and visitors, Michelle Bayer, Linda Feuerbach, Melissa Flynn, Carolyn Kelly, Kathy Ryan, Sally Scott, Lee Simmons, Sue Thorne, and Allison Anhold White; assisting as greeters and ushers, high school students Tyler Erdman and Max Warnock; the tellers are Adele Artolino, Michelle Bayer, Nancy Hammond, Beth Heisey, Carolyn Kelly, Kathy Ryan, Sally Scott, and Pamela Thorne; helping voters to their seats, Tom Keough and Bruce Warren; and assistant moderator in the auditorium if we had needed to use that space, Jay Bothwick. Thank you all for serving the town. If you're having trouble finding seats, there are a couple rows in the front to my right that are pretty empty. There is a handout prepared by the Regional School Committee and a copy of the warrant, which also contains the motion to be offered under Article III. You should have found both of those on your chair, but if you don't have them, please raise your hand and one of the tellers will give you what you need. As I think you all know, we'll be voting electronically at this meeting, as we have previously. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use these keypads for all votes, so if you don't have one, you should go to the check-in station in the lobby and get one. When the voting period for each motion opens, the green light to the left of the podium will light up, and you'll have 45 seconds to vote. Now, that's a longer voting period than we've used before, and the reason for that is with this many people and this many handsets in use, it actually takes longer for the computer to tabulate the results than when we have 500 or 600 people. So with the handset, you press 1 to vote yes and press 2 to vote no for the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press the other button. The computer records only your last choice. If you want to abstain, don't press any button, or if you've already recorded a yes or no vote, press 3, and that clears the previous choice. After you vote, the handset will display the words "yes received" or "no received" on the screen to confirm that your vote has been counted. So the first thing we need to do is to make sure that all these handsets are on. If you see text on the screen, the handset is on. If the screen is blank, it's off, and you need to press the power button, which is the button in the lower right-hand corner of the handset. Does anyone have any questions about the handsets or how to use them? Okay. The handsets have new batteries and were all tested yesterday, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the received message or you experience any other problem, you can go to the electronic voting help desk in the lobby and get another. We're going to conduct a test vote to make sure everyone is comfortable with the handsets. So here's the test question: will the Red Sox win the American League Championship? When the green light goes on, voting time is open, and you'll have 45 seconds. You'll be happy to know, the result is 458 yes, 82 no, with 20 abstentions. Any questions about electronic voting? Okay, then we'll go to Article 1. Article 1 is a proposal to amend the town's general bylaw to reduce the number of members of the Finance Committee from nine to seven. And Eli Bowling moves the article as printed, and Margaret Driscoll seconds. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Remarks, Mr. Bowling.
How about now? Better. So the Finance Committee currently has a complement of nine members, but at times this has presented a challenge for maintaining a quorum. One might think that with a larger pool to draw from, maintaining a quorum would be easier, but it turns out that this is a little bit trickier in moderate-sized groups. In the past few years, there have been increasing number of Finance Committee meetings and joint board meetings that have been difficult to schedule due to the need to pull together a minimum of five members when they've been called to meet a quorum. Both the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen have come to the conclusion that it would be easier to manage the issue if we reduced it to a group of seven, which would require a quorum of four. So the town moderator would still appoint three members of this board, and the Board of Selectmen would appoint four on a staggered schedule to provide for continuity of membership, and we'd ask for your support to help us with this so that we can have an easier time scheduling meetings, especially going into this year's budget season.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Is there discussion? I don't see any hands up. So if you're in favor of Mr. Bowling's motion, please press 1. If you're...did I miss somebody? No. If you're in favor, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Thank you. Thank you. Can we have the light, please? I could call for ayes and nays, but I want to make sure we get the system working before If people are still looking for seats, there are still plenty of open ones down here to Maybe not. If you're in favor of Mr. Bowling's motion, please press 1. The vote is 611 yes, 46 no, and two abstentions. Article II is a proposal to change the method by which punishment is directed out under the snow emergency parking ban. And Becky Jakes moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Arthur Steinert seconds. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Remarks, Ms. Jakes.
This amendment references the appropriate state statute enabling an appeal of a parking ban ticket, bless you, to be handled by the town clerk and avoiding having to take the issue to court.
Thank you, Ms. Jakes. Is there discussion? Yes, ma'am. Would you wait for a mic, please?
Martha Farmer, 12 Bridge Street. I'm just curious what the fine will be. The former fine of $25 has been scratched through, and that leaves it open to be much higher. I wonder what it is.
Mr. Fetterspiel. This is Town Administrator Greg Fetterspiel.
So actually, the state statute that is referenced caps it at $25, and the selectmen can set that lower if they prefer, but they have chosen to set it at the $25.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Further discussion? Okay, if you're in favor of Ms. Jakes's motion, when the light comes on, and I hope it's And the motion prevails by a vote of 626 to 39. And I don't think I need to tell you what Article III is about. So I'll recognize Shannon Erdman, the Chair of the Regional School Committee, for the main motion. You need to switch it on.
Thank you. You're a great crowd. I make the motion that appears after Article III on the handout that contains the warrant.
And would you stand, please?
I make the motion that appears after Article III on the handout that contains the warrant.
And Caroline Weld, the Co-Chair of the School Building Committee, seconds the motion.
Is this working? Oh, good. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for your continued support, and thank you all for your passionate and unwavering commitment to our schools. On behalf of the Manchester Essex Regional School District, I come before you tonight to ask for your affirmative vote to replace the 70-year-old elementary school in which we now sit. But before I do that, I would like to spend a moment to give you an idea of what the past investments you have made in our district have yielded. MERSD is Boston Magazine's ninth-best district in the Commonwealth. Our high school is the fifth-best school in the state and was named a U.S. News and World Report Gold Medal School. MERHS was also ranked among the top 20% of high schools nationwide, with our STEM programs ranking 200th in the nation. Internationally, our district has been recognized by the Program for International Assessment for outperforming in English, science, and mathematics. Nearly 20 years ago, the towns of Manchester and Essex came together to form a regional school district. Nearly 10 years ago, we came together again to build a new middle-high school. Tonight, we gather to replace our elementary school here in Manchester, and in roughly 10 years, we will come together again to replace our elementary school in Essex. So you see, this process continues to be part of the long-term commitment to the education of our students. The proposal before you tonight is the result of a thorough and exhaustive process, which was and will continue to be expertly shepherded by the School Building Committee. This citizen oversight group is comprised of Manchester and Essex residents, who possess a wealth of varied experience, talent, and dedication. They have worked very closely with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to create a school which addresses our program needs in the most educationally appropriate and fiscally responsible manner possible. In order to walk you through the particulars of this process and highlight some of the key decisions with regard to design, I respectfully request that the moderator recognize Andy Oldeman to represent the School Building Committee. But before I do that, would those of you who attended Memorial School please stand? That's pretty cool. This is a testament to generations who have attended Memorial and have come tonight. Thank you, and go Hornets!
Thank you, Ms. Erdman. Before I recognize Andy Oldeman for remarks, I want to take just a moment to be sure the meeting understands the procedure we're following, both for the vote tonight and at the election on November 6th. Bond Counsel for the Regional School District has advised us that the agreement between Manchester and Essex and state law require a different process than the one we usually follow for approving debt. Under the agreement between Manchester and Essex, the regional stool district may incur debt only if it's approved by a two-thirds vote at town meeting in both towns. For approval of the debt itself, there is no requirement for a vote at the state election. Ms. Erdman's motion, however, is to approve the borrowing contingent on approval by the voters of a debt exclusion under Proposition 2.5. A debt exclusion must be approved by ballot at an election. It allows the town to raise property taxes above the levy limit, excuse me, under Proposition 2.5 by an amount sufficient to pay principal and interest on specific debt. The levy limit is the maximum amount the town can raise by taxation under Proposition 2.5. A debt exclusion is temporary, permitting the town to exceed the levy limit only for the life of the debt. Once the debt is retired, both the exclusion and the resulting tax increase end. So here's the bottom line: to go forward with a school construction project as proposed, approval by Manchester's voters is required twice. Tonight, the meeting must approve the regional school districts incurring the debt, and that takes a two-thirds vote. On November 6th of the election, the voters must approve the exclusion of the town's payments toward that debt from the limitations of Proposition 2.5. That will take only a simple majority. Essex will have to follow the same two-step process. Are there any questions about these procedural issues? Then I recognize Andy Oldeman of the School Building Committee for remarks. I'm sure there'll be questions and comments following Mr. Oldeman's comments, but I ask that you hold them until he's finished.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everyone. My name is Andy Oldeman. I'm at 61 School Street. I'm a Finance Committee member. I'm also a Finance Committee liaison to the Building Committee. And as a day job, I'm an engineer in the construction industry. So the Memorial School has served the community for about 67 years. It's a single-story school structure, roughly 67,000 square feet. It holds classrooms, administration, auditorium, and the gymnasium. Memorial has pretty strong architectural character and features and can be admired, has independent classrooms, wings with single-loaded corridors, lots of glass, and it has an auditorium, something most elementary schools don't have these days. These characteristics are also the reason that a simple renovation is not cost-effective and that the renovation addition options studied were too expensive to justify. Expansive areas of single-glazed windows are not energy-efficient, and upgrading the glazing would also require extensive structural upgrades to meet current building code. With the sprawling classroom wings, expanding the size of existing classrooms would require new foundations and structure. The classroom wings have an east-west orientation, whereas good design practice promotes north-south orientation for good natural daylighting and for reduced solar load and solar glare. Any significant alteration project at the school would likely also trigger extensive ADA upgrades to deal with the multiple levels throughout the school and some sloped grades that are too steep. While Memorial is showing its age, typical building and systems maintenance have been done to keep, to provide basic upkeep of the facilities. The presence of asbestos and lead-containing materials in the building limits certain project repairs from happening without great expense. However, selected capital projects have been done. For example, in 2012, a new fire alarm system was installed. In 2002, extensive lighting upgrades were performed. More recently, a couple years ago, there was a failure of the main water line to the school that had to be repaired. The good news is that water line will also serve the proposed project. The 2013 Building Condition Assessment identified capital projects that are totaling about $10 million in current $2,018 for projects at Memorial School. This, together with the space challenges for accommodating the educational program... This, together with the space challenges for accommodating the educational program, was the motivation for pursuing a construction project with the MSBA. The feasibility and schematic design that was funded at the 2016 Annual Town Meeting has been completed through the efforts of the owner's project manager, Doran Whittier, J.C.J. Architects, and, more recently, the addition of the construction manager, J.T. Rich. Working with the Building Committee, the team studied fourteen different options: one renovation, four renovation addition, and nine new. The selected option that is described in the handout that you're provided tonight is labeled "The Hub." This represents what the committee determined to be the best value for the district. Here are some highlights of the proposed school design, "The Hub." It's a two-story, seventy-seven thousand-square-foot building. It's about 10,000 square feet larger than the one that's here today. The larger size of the school over the current design reflects larger classroom sizes, expanded corridors to support the educational program, and a larger gymnasium to accommodate regulation games. Currently, the high school gymnasium is the only gym that can accommodate practices and games, and quite often during the week, there are practices that will start at as late as 10 o'clock. It will be a fifty-year building, as mandated by the MSBA. There will be three classrooms per grade with flexibility for enrollment expansion if that happens in future years. The space for the current special education programs is also provided. The building offers opportunity for future expansion should that enrollment continue. The proposed design is also very energy-efficient, a dramatic difference from the existing school. As nice as those large windows are, they come at an expense. Importantly, the design is secure for student safety. There's controlled access at all doors. Administration is located near the main entry. There are clear sightlines from the main lobby, also referred to as "The Hub," so you can see down all the classroom corridors and you can see into the common areas. There's a separate community access with a secure separation for community access to the gymnasium, so the town meeting that we're having here tonight can also be supported by the proposed project. Voting can also be supported during the day, and importantly, it can happen while school is still in session. Currently, when there's a town vote day, school is not in session. Community also has use of the media center on the second floor of the school. The $52.2 million cost estimate for the project has been approved by the MSBA. The MSBA will fund $12.2 million of the project. That's about twenty-four percent. The remaining forty million would be funded by Manchester and Essex. Manchester at 26.8 million and Essex at 13.2 million. The selected option was considered the best value among all other options and was less than other new or renovation addition options. While the renovation option was, the renovation-only option, was only $36 million only. This option is not supported by the MSBA because it does not support the district's educational program. Therefore, the cost would be 100% to Manchester and Essex, and ultimately, this cost would be similar to what the two towns would bear with the selected option. So what's next? If Manchester and Essex vote to approve the project at town meeting tonight and at the ballot tomorrow night for Essex, the architect will proceed with the final design. The project will be competitively bid through the construction manager, and construction would begin in the summer of 2019 and conclude in the fall of 2021. Phase one, there's two phases to the project. Phase one would conclude with the completion of the two-story classroom wing. So after one year of construction, the kids would be able to move into the final classroom design space. If the project does not pass, the School Committee will review the plan and propose to bring it up at spring 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Oldeman. And I recognize Susan Beckman, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Memorial School plan has been vetted, met the requirements and the standards of the Massachusetts School Building Association, and is unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen. I want to thank the members of the committee for all their hard work, time, and effort in developing a good plan for our school. I also want to thank you for your consideration of this important vote and provide some perspective. Over the next few decades, excuse me, we have a long list of strategic capital investments estimated upwards of $100 million. The Memorial School is just one of them. Other future needs include new water and sewer lines, treatment plant upgrades, town offices, seawall repairs, and improved storm protection. These strategic needs and costs are driven in part by aging infrastructure and the change in our environment. Currently, it's a good time to borrow. Interest rates remain at a historic low, inflation remains tame, and banks have cash to lend. But that can change. That's why planning is important. Understanding priorities and setting strong fiscal policy, making the best choices with the best information, is critical. We need to look at every individual project within the context of the town priorities as defined by our community and our master plan. Manchester can and should not pursue public spending it cannot afford, but we cannot sit idle if we are to meet the strategic investment needs of the town. The Memorial School is currently the largest infrastructure need and should be replaced as soon as possible. This investment is a top priority for the capital spending in Manchester. We're asking you to support 100% debt exclusion, and we're asking a lot. The $1.7 million annual debt service for Manchester's share requires a 6.5 increase in our taxes. In addition, the annual two-and-a-half percent tax increase combined with another percent growth in tax base from our new construction, this all funds the cost of our operating budget at current service levels. Thus, when the new school project is completed in three years, the full impact of the bonds, combined with the annual tax increase, will be approaching 9%. We must have an invigorated commitment to sound fiscal management for the town, and we are seeing that this project, in the context of overall tax implications, is measured by committing to find ways to offset the increases. Some of those include refining our fiscal policy, setting firm parameters for spending and accounting for maintenance costs, strengthening our project management process, actively looking at partnerships and opportunities, developing lower-cost housing for our community retirees, and pursuing smart development to increase our tax base. We're looking to fund all other non-capital needs, non-school capital needs, by switching to a cash basis over the next fifteen years. And finally, we need to hold all departments accountable, including the schools, to sound and disciplined operational budget management year over year. Yes, the proposed school project means an increase in your taxes, but we cannot make investment of this magnitude without a tax increase. But importantly, our new capital funding strategy will not, will increase, will not come to the detriment of our town projects and other needs. We are acutely aware of what we are asking. Our refined fiscal strategy should give you confidence that we have a roadmap for providing these services. Engage with us, share your ideas, and hold us accountable. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee are committed to managing future growth and taxation that slows down the rate of increase that we've had over the last twenty years. We will do our level best at keeping our taxes in check while supporting our schools and our wonderful community that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckman. And I recognize Maury Creighton, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to share the perspective of the Finance Committee on this proposed new school-building project. Members of the Finance Committee have been following this project for a long time, and we support it unanimously. Manchester is in good financial shape, and I would like to walk through the current town finances and how we recommend absorbing the cost of this new project. If approved, the new building will be complete in 2021, and full payments will start at that time. The cost to the town of Manchester is estimated to be $27 million. With borrowing over thirty years and a conservative interest rate of 5%, the annual payments will be $1.7 million annually. Of course, this new expense must be viewed in the larger context of the town and school budgets. Each year, our town budget considers current and future expenses and revenues. On the revenue side, funds come from taxation and we work hard to contain the annual increase to 2.5% within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. The town also derives revenues from receipts, excise taxes, building permits, new growth from construction, and various smaller sources, which typically generate about another 1% in new revenue. However, over the last twenty-two years, we've had three overrides and many debt exclusions that have increased annual expenditures closer to an average of 5%, and this is a history that we do not want to repeat going forward. Expenses come from three key areas: town operating, capital, and the school district. Town operating covers salaries and expenses for all departments and typically runs about $14 million a year. We have a five-year outlook to manage finances, gain efficiencies for town operations, and we're recommending efforts to regionalize where possible for future savings. Town capital projects focus on our infrastructure: roads, water and sewer lines, facilities, and we've been ramping up our expenditures toward a goal of $3 million annually. Traditionally, town capital projects have been funded through borrowing and debt. The town's capital debt is currently at $7 million. We are moving into a third year of a program, transitioning away from borrowing and the associated interest costs to a cash-based, pay-as-you-go capital program. This strategy has a significant advantage of eliminating borrowing expenses and addressing the town's needs more efficiently in the years to come. This strategy will dampen future tax increases, as we do not anticipate our total taxation through exclusions going higher for non-school capital needs. And when including the district, an important guide for keeping, important guide for us is keeping the total debt service at 10% or less of our operating expense. The town reserves have grown over time to a level above what we recommend. Going forward, we believe it is prudent to maintain reserves equivalent to 10% of the operating budget. Currently, we are at 16%. We are funding town capital improvements with cash, a slight reallocation of local receipts this coming year, staying on track to accomplish the infrastructure projects that the town needs, with no increased taxes for the residents. Very large capital projects can wait until the 2030s, when debt can be taken without causing our taxes to rise. The third expense category is the Manchester Essex Regional School District. The district runs as its own entity and is responsible for management, operations, acquiring debt, and strategic direction. Members of the Selectmen and the Finance Committee in both towns work closely with the School Committee and the administrators throughout the year. The school's operating budget covers salaries and expenses, which are apportioned to Manchester and Essex using the school district formula. Manchester's contribution is approximately 2/3, and Essex is 1/3. Our town's financial planning and long-term budget management assumes that the annual operating expense for Manchester goes no higher than 3.2% in the years to come. Part of the cost of the regional district comes in the form of debt service. Currently, Manchester pays $1.4 million each year to cover the debt of the high school building project. This debt is declining at a rate of about $35,000 a year and will roll off completely in 2034. In 2023, the high school debt will drop down about $164,000, and again, in 2030, it'll drop down by about another $197,000. And as we've heard, the new proposed Memorial School project will add an annual increase of $1.7 million. Future consideration for rebuilding the Essex Elementary School in 2034 would take advantage of the high school debt being fully paid off at that time and additional funds being available from completing our town's OPEB retiree liabilities, and potential revenue maybe from a new limited commercial district. So how do we pay for this proposed project starting in 2021 and going forward? The Finance Committee recommends and supports a debt exclusion for a tax increase of 6.5%. This allows Manchester the best flexibility going forward. There are opportunities to pay the new debt without a full 6.5% increase, but we believe the voters in the future should have the option to use such other funds as they see fit. A partial debt exclusion could burden future capital projects through shorter, costlier programs and hinder long-term planning efforts for the town. For taxpayers, the 6.5% tax increase represents approximately $72 per $100,000 of valuation. The median value of a home in Manchester is approximately $737,000. So this project would add about $535 to the median value tax bill. In 2021, if this building project is approved, we would see a single tax increase of 6.5% coupled with our 2.5% for a total of 9% that year. Going forward after that, we would be looking at an annual tax increases that remain at the 2.5% annually. So I've outlined for you new approaches that the Finance Committee feels will provide even stronger management of the town finances going forward. Our guiding principles include staying within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, maintaining reserves that are 10% of total expenditures, keeping our debt payments to a maximum of 10% of total expenditures, staying the course to fully fund our retiree liabilities, and capping non-school exclusions at their current level, a significant change from the past twenty years of expanding exclusions. Hopefully, you have a clearer picture of the town's financial position and the ability to fund this proposed project. Memorial School has served us well, but this important town and district asset is tired. It is now consuming valuable resources at an increasing rate. The time to replace the building is now. Unfortunately, it is expensive to stand still, and it is costly not to do anything. We have an opportunity in front of us to strengthen our schools for the future and to continue to make Manchester the wonderful town that we all appreciate. The Finance Committee thanks all who have brought this good plan forward and strongly endorses this project and recommends your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Would you wait for the mic, please?
Jerry Jota, 15 Woodcrest Road. I've been following the discussion for some time now, and there are two areas which I may have missed, but I'd like to hear about. One is security. I don't know what you've done in the planning or the control of the building that will provide security for the children attending and the teachers. And number two, I don't see anything about the growth rate that we're going to experience both in MERS children and others from other populations. Thank you.
Who's the right person to answer? I think that's probably... Yes. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lapasta. I'm a principal with J.C.J. Architecture. I'd be happy to answer your question. In terms of safety and security, many, many things have been done at the school, starting with the basic layout and plan of the school. On our project team, we are teamed with a firm called DVS Security. They are the premier security consulting firm for school security design, well, any security design. Their founding partner, Bob DeSobell, and I have been working together on school security since the mid-1990s, since actually before Columbine. Bob led the effort in Connecticut after the Sandy Hook disaster, the Sandy Hook tragedy. He and I actually... He and I actually did a seminar for all the school districts in Connecticut on school safety. He helped write the new security code that was adopted in Connecticut and subsequently informed the Commonwealth's security codes. I want to give you some background on the folks that we have on the team, so we care very deeply about this. The security is built into the school through the layout of the building. We'll start with the site. Cars and buses are neatly organized, so everyone knows where they should be. Cars are kept away from the building. They'll be further away. I mean, right now, you can pull up right out front. You'll still be able to, don't worry, parents, you'll still be able to drop your kids off out front, but the cars will be kept a little bit further away. Cars in one area, buses in another. One premise of school security and safety is to make sure you know who's coming onto your site, you can see them, and if something looks wrong, you can respond immediately. Everyone entering the building after arrival hours will need to be buzzed through the office. So unlike this school where you do have to be buzzed in, but you go in the lobby, you'll be led into a vestibule in the new building, and from there, the only option will be to leave or go into the main office. And you'll have to be buzzed into the main office where your ID will be checked. From there, you can then be allowed into the school building. So there's essentially kind of an airlock before anyone can get into the school. The school plan is laid out with sightlines that everything comes back. Andy mentioned the hub. The hub is the center of the school. You could stand there and actually see everything that's happening all the way through the building. There are areas throughout the school where adults will be stationed, whether it's a teacher office, media center, specialist room. So there's always a place where there's an adult who can kind of just keep an eye on things through passive supervision. There will be cameras and other security systems in place, but those are not your first line of defense. People are. And then lastly, as was also mentioned, the building is being separated into zones so that the gymnasium and cafeteria can be used separately, completely locked off from the rest of the school. So on an election day or an event, if you have non-school people using the building, they can be behind locked doors and nowhere near the children. So that's kind of a broad overview of the safety and security. Then there was a second question?
Second question was, what provisions have been made for growth in population, student population?
I was going, okay. So the second, I can address how the school building is being designed to accommodate future growth. It is an actual requirement of the MSBA that we explain to them how the building could be expanded in the future, how we've prepared for it. And there's two different ways that's happened. The first is, inside the building, there is the ability to convert what are being labeled on your plan, I believe, as project rooms. Those are rooms that support programs right now that the school has in STEM and Makerspace and hands-on learning. If you had a bubble year, those are sized so that you could take one of those rooms over and use it for the bubble class without any construction. Furthermore, there are areas adjacent to the preschool and at the other end of the building that have been reserved on the site where, excuse me, in the future, there is room to add, you know, two, three classrooms on the site without impacting anything else that's been accommodated. So the building has both internal flexibility and then a place to add externally if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Lapasta. Mr. Jotas, did you have another question? The mic is coming. That's all right.
My question was, what is the percentage growth you expect over the period of time? And that wasn't addressed, and I'd like to know whether we have automatic lockdown of the school, which has been one of the problems that we hear on the news all the time.
Mr. Lapasta.
I can only answer, I believe, the second one, the superintendent, I believe, or someone else will have to answer the enrollment. We have not completed final design of the system. Currently, there is not an automatic lockdown where every door in the building can be locked. That certainly, if the project moves forward and final design is done, that's one of those things that would be in the cards to look at. Some schools do it, some don't. There certainly will be electronics in the building that will allow quick communication and the ability for students to be locked down in the rooms, but it would still require the teacher to go over and lock the door and move the children out of sight. But that's certainly a consideration that can be put into the final design plans if the district would like.
Thank you, Mr. Lapasta. And Ms. Boden, can you answer the other ask or do you like question?
Sure. Hi, I'm Pam Boden, Superintendent of Schools. On the percentage growth anticipated, we have had the study done by MSBA, and they're looking at a relatively flat period coming forward for us at 335. What we know from past experience at the high school is that when we built the new school, we experienced a fairly significant increase, 20% enrollment over seven years. So Jim mentioned some of the physical features of the building that allows for some flexibility. And I believe when we ran the numbers, we can expand up to 396 students, so we're building at design level for 335. We can expand with the current configuration up to 390, 396, without any disruption to the program. And I believe at our height, we were 440, and we can do that by moving the project rooms into play. Still minor disruption to the program, but no need for additional building.
Thank you, Ms. Boden. Further discussion? Yes, sir. There's one coming behind you.
Hi, Mark Allen, Spire Rock Hill Road. I have three questions. One for the district surrounding the replacement of the Essex School. So if the district can confirm that the Essex School will not be replaced until 2034? And the second question is for the district as well. Over the last few years, the district has come back and asked for additional money from the community. What other money will the district be looking for besides the school replacement in the next few years? Third question, I think, is for the town Finance Committee. I believe there's a formula that calculates the 2/3 that split between Essex and Memorial. Is there any risk that that number's going to shift and Memorial, excuse me, Manchester will have to pick up more than 2/3 of the cost of the district in the next five to 10 years?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I think the first two questions are for Avi Urbis. This is Avi Urbis, the Business Manager of the Regional School District.
The question is about the Essex Elementary. We did do projections where we looked at our ability to figure out when we would time the Essex Elementary project, and certainly waiting till the middle high school debt rolls off, so you do not have the added debt costs is within the realm of possibility. If you did a project for Essex Elementary immediately after the Memorial School project, it would be about six years sooner. So the notion is that with a six-year window, you could certainly, it's within the realm of possibility, and certainly the plan to hold off on incurring additional costs so that you could not have three schools being paid for at the same time. So hopefully that answers the first question. Second question?
Second question was, what additional expenditures is the school anticipate adding?
So on the capital side, the goal is, I mean, we have three main assets in the building, so that's really where we're at at this point. We're looking to deal with other items through either operating budgets. We do have reserves, and so the goal is to stick with that.
And the third question, I think, was for the town, and that was whether there is any risk that the school agreement formula will shift from 2/3, 1/3, 2/3 Manchester, 1/3 Essex, to something less favorable, more expensive for Manchester. And I'll ask Mr. Creighton to answer that.
Thank you very much. So the district formula is broken up into sort of three components that said it. About 50% of the driver of the district agreement is the enrollment from each town in the school system. And then 25% is on the population of the two towns, and then the remaining 25% is actually on the valuation of property in the two towns. So those numbers are relatively large and baked in. They don't change a lot, so that 2/3, 1/3 ratio is pretty constant. Probably the driver that moves it a little bit is if the Manchester population of enrolled students goes up a little bit and Essex goes down, or vice versa. That sort of tends to be what the change is. Valuation changes of property and populations in the towns are pretty constant.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ashley Oak, 7 North Street. And I'm not familiar with what we currently have for resources for the special education. I noticed in the layout that there are four classrooms. I was wondering if someone could provide some detail on the students in our town, in Essex, and then outside of our district who are school-choiced in, just to kind of get an idea of why we're having three dedicated classrooms. I mean, four, excuse me.
Ms. Boden?
I'm trying to figure out how to do this most efficiently. We have several district-wide special education programs that are considered specialized programs. There's our Earl program, which is like a landmark program, our Sale program, which assists students with social, emotional, and autistic spectrum concerns, and then we have our severe disabilities program called Swing. These three programs are housed, two here at Memorial and one at Essex, and the concept there is we have students from both Memorial and Essex in a cohort so that we can service them in district. These students would typically be eligible, if we didn't have in-district programming, to attend schools outside of the district, what we call an out-of-district placement, at the expense to the taxpayers of Manchester. By keeping students in district, we first and foremost allow them the opportunity to attend school with their peers, and then fulfill our financial responsibility by avoiding approximately $650,000 annually in out-of-district expense. The classrooms in this current floor plan represent what we currently have in place. We currently have a lower grade Earl, K2, and an upper grade 3.5, and the same for Sale, housed here in Memorial. They house Essex and Manchester students, and we're continuing them forward in the new building. Choice district-wide is approximately 64 students. Primarily, those students are located at 6 through 12. Currently, we've been limited in our ability to take choice students because of our resident enrollment increasing.
Could you wait for the mic, please? And also wait to be recognized?
Sorry.
Okay.
I was wondering, just for number of students, just to understand the size of those classrooms and the student body that they serve?
Sizes of the classes are capped at eight, so the capacity would be eight students per section, so 24 students total in the four specialized programs.
Did you have a further question?
Okay, so there are 24 students total in the special education, or, oh, sorry.
Special education district-wide is 12% of our overall population, so roughly 200 and some odd students. In specialized programs, those identified as Earl, Sale, and Swing, Earl and Sale contain approximately 24 students.
Thank you, Ms. Boden. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paula Godonis, 56 Mascanoma Street. I'd like to have someone explain the table that's in page nine of this handout. The pages aren't marked, but there's a very interesting table. You know, as taxpayers, we commissioned a study of feasibility of either renovating the school or building new. Because, you know, one option may be, well, let's just do nothing. But as I read this, the feasibility study says doing nothing is really not an option. It's going to cost us $36 million to just continue to maintain and renovate this school for our children. Or we pay, it's $52 million, however, the state will pick up about a quarter of that. So I see at the bottom here, it says, with the new school, it would cost us about $1.7 million a year in extra costs. If we just renovate, that would cost us about a million and a half. So the difference is $169,000 for just trying to maintain this old building or putting in a new building that'll last in the next 50 years. Is that correct? Or is anyone else going to explain this table to us?
Mr. Urbis? Mr. Oldham? Mr. Oldham?
So if I understood your question correctly, so the $36 million that is represented by the renovation option, so that's not necessarily just doing maintenance of the existing school. That's actually doing a large capital project to upgrade the building, the building envelope, the systems, the electrical systems and distribution, mechanical systems. So that's, but it's not changing the school in its form. You're not adding square footage. You're just making modifications to the existing square footage. And because it doesn't meet the educational program, it's not supported by the MSBA, they offer no money, no contribution toward that. So that $36 million comes directly to both towns. And so when you look at it compared to the proposed project, which is $40 million to both towns, it's a $4 million delta. It's that $169 that you calculated.
Yes. A lady on the aisle.
Hopewa Bucci, Tupuntum Court. Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. There was discussion about the suggestion of firm parameters for spending by the town, by the Finance Committee. Have those parameters been established, or any discussion about future firm parameters for our spending? I'd like to know that. Also, just so I understand what this woman's comment as well. So for the special ed rooms, it's 24 students for four rooms, 24 students always. And then the resource rooms, we have like five resource rooms. I'm just trying to get a handle on the number of rooms and how many rooms will be empty and designated for future growth, excuse me, future growth. And I'm not quite sure that we got a clear number on the number of growth for the town, for this school, for the Manchester Essex. You gave us some district numbers, but I'd like some more local numbers if possible. Thank you.
Well, I think there are three questions there. Pam, can you take the, Ms. Boden, the second and third?
My math was wrong. We have four classrooms with a capacity of eight students for specialized programming. So those are the four that are designated sped on the diagrams. The resource room, it's labeled resource, but it would also be dual-purpose with general ed, things like reading tutorials, small group instruction, or something that we call a learning center. I don't believe we'll have any rooms vacant at this point in time, but we will have the expansion possibility to turn the project room into a classroom should we get a surge in population that pushes us close to the 430 mark that we were at, a 440 mark that we were at a few years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Boden. And the first question, I think, was for Mr. Creighton concerning the four principles of financial planning the Finance Committee is implementing.
Yes, so in practice, and what we've been doing each year is essentially following those guidelines, but we're really trying to formalize that. So we mentioned five specifically. Staying within the limits of Proposition 2.5, that process overrides the entire budget process from the beginning to the end, and we struggle with that through the entire year, but we hold to that. Reserves at 10% of total expenditure, the reserves are actually higher at this point, and they're up close, as I mentioned, to about 16%. We would not want them to go below 10% because that's essentially sort of a safety net in case something happens in the town and we need to deal with that. Debt payments to a total of 10% of expenditures, that is something we're striving to work for going forward. Following the course of funding our unfunded liabilities, OPEB, we've been working consistently on that for a number of years, and have been making pretty good progress on that, and will continue to do that. And then capping non-school exclusions at their current level is something we're trying to do better on going forward. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Eric Stallins, 4 Anthony Ave. I thought I heard a statement earlier that 3.2% or maybe I have it wrong just slightly, but 3.2% is the commitment that has been achieved for fiscal year 19. But when I look at the school budget for the next five years, they're projecting a 4-point-plus percent increase annually for the next five years. If I If I take 46% of our budget is the school budget, that's guaranteed 2% increase a year from the school budget, which under Prop. 2.5 leaves the town with a 1% increase a year in expense to stay within 2.5%. So if the school committee...let me step back. If the town has a...the finance committee has an agreement at 3.2%, it would appear to me like the budget for the school needs to comply with that for the next five-year plan. Otherwise, we're out of alignment, so I fail to understand, respectfully, how the town can exert pressure, because we've got a lot of expenses come and do. So what is the school committee and the school finance committee doing to lower the projected expenses below 4-plus percent for the next five years, or even 10 years or 20 years?
Well, I think the first part of that question is for Mr. Creighton. Congratulations.
It's a busy evening here this evening. You've hit right on the head of basically what a lot of our budget year is about. So we start talking with the school, we start talking with Essex very early on in the budget season, and we go back and forth and back and forth, and things get whittled away, and ultimately, we strive to come down to that 3.2%. And we really try to do our long-term budget planning. The school tries to do the same, and we do our best to come right in. And so our models going forward, really, that 3.2% number is where everything really works. When we get above that, it becomes more difficult, so.
And I think the second part of that question is for Ms. Bowden, which is, what's the school going to do to meet the 3.2?
I think more laid it out. What we do is what we do every year, which is we have an obligation, first and foremost, to make the school committee aware and the town boards of both Essex and Manchester aware of what the needs are to run the school, but like every committee, like every town, like every home, what we might need and what we have to work with are two different things. So we begin working in October to collaboratively set some parameters for the budget, and we go back and forth throughout the year to try and reach a mutually agreeable decision that doesn't put either the town or the school in too difficult a spot going forward, and we're going to continue with that process this year.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Blair.
Hi, Camilla Blair, 2 Burnham Lane. I just have two questions. One, first of all, I would like to say I'm in support of the new school. My kids got an amazing education at Manchester. But my first question is maintenance. It's been a huge issue in the past, which is one of the reasons this building is falling apart. And from what I understand how it works, is money is put aside each year for maintenance, but then if the school needs more money, it's taken away from maintenance. And I've heard that the high school is...new high school is already beginning to suffer. First question. Second question, and this is more like a town question. My worry is there are a lot of older people in town on fixed incomes. There are a lot of townies who have inherited houses but can't afford to live here anymore. And I just don't want us to lose the diversity of the town, because that is one of the things that makes Manchester Manchester. And I was just wondering if the town could start thinking about maybe a luxury tax so that people who owned a house over whatever, so many millions, would pay a little bit more so that you could then reduce the tax for some of the older residents. Thank you.
Ms. Bowden, on the first part of the question? Mr. Erbus?
So on the issue of maintenance practices, one of the things that the MSBA wants to see before they commit any of their funds to a building project is what are the district maintenance practices? So we had to submit information documenting how we go about maintenance, what we do, how much money we've invested, what our annual budgets are, et cetera. And while it is true that the budget is always tight, we did get one of the highest reimbursement incentive points that they've given, according to the MSBA, for our maintenance practices. So you're eligible for a maximum of 2%, which is typically never given, and we came in at 1.93%, and they made a point of mentioning that to us. So we are doing our best there. We do engage in long-term planning, and some of the information that we've shared also is that we've been spending close to $1 million to make sure that we can keep the building operational. What's left now are items that are just in the six and some are into the seven figures, where it just doesn't make sense to absorb that within an operational budget. It wouldn't fit within the levy limit, and you would be putting it into a building that is an old building anyway. So it's a question of putting good money after bad. So we're doing what we can to keep us where we need to be for now, and we're now at the point where we have to make a strategic decision about a more systemic change for the building that's in significant need.
Thank you, Mr. Erbus. So I'll get to you in just one minute. So Ms. Blair, your second question also had two parts to it. One was about the town's effort to maintain diversity, and the second was about a luxury tax. And I'll ask Susan Beckman to respond to the first piece, and then Mr. Fettersfield to respond to the second. Ms. Beckman.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So we've just gone through a three-year process in looking at our master plan for the town with a tremendous amount of input from the community. One of the top items of us is looking at our housing issues, and specifically around housing for retirees, as we mentioned before. We have some plans in place. We're beginning the process of looking at that. The goal is to find alternatives for community housing that can serve our entire population and ensure that we can keep the culture and the kind of community that we are so people can stay and thrive here in Manchester. And Greg has the other half of this.
Thank you, Ms. Beckman. Mr. Fettersfield.
All right, well, so a luxury tax, no. Not allowed under state statutes. We don't have the authority to do that. We do have in existence four programs that provide some relief for those on fixed income and limited incomes. The thresholds are, again, established by state law, so we don't have a lot of leeway. We did, a couple years ago, increase Manchester's thresholds to the maximum threshold in terms of how much money you can earn and still be eligible for those relief programs. So we do have four of those in place now. We don't have a lot of people participating in those. I think there are more folks out there that could, so I would encourage you to talk to Ginny Thompson in our assessor's office to see if you might be eligible for those programs. There is a fifth option. It's not that common in towns, but it is an option that the state does provide in that you can exempt the first...I think I'm recalling this correctly. I think it's the first $100,000 of your home value, and exempt that from taxation. What that does is, in effect, put more burden on the higher-income homes. So the amount of money that we need to raise is the same, and it drives it towards those with higher-value homes. In Manchester, we already have a pretty skewed tax base, where the vast majority of the income is already coming from a minority of the homeowners. So if we were to adopt something like this $100,000 exemption, it would skew that even further. And I would be cautious on taking that route, because we already are pretty skewed in terms of the burden that are placed on the higher-end homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Fettersfield. Mr. Furlong, you had your hand up.
Good evening. Chuck Furlong, Ocean Street. I'd like to revisit two earlier questions, because I'd like to get some clarity on the answers. The school district seems to be pointing to year 2002-8 for an elementary school in Essex, whereas the finance committee seems to be pointing to year 2034. I'd like to get clarity on which year is the year that voters should anticipate that request. And secondly, we have a budget document that we're looking at, which portrays 4% plus increases in the operating budget over the next five years. Will the school district commit this evening not to seek an operational override during that budget cycle?
Ms. Bowden? Ms. Bowden, please.
I cannot speak for the school committee, but I can answer like I answered before. I don't feel like I could make that commitment and do my job appropriately, but I can commit to working collaboratively, and the committee commits to working collaboratively, to work with the town to fund our budget to the best of our ability.
Mr. Furlong, did you get the answer you were looking for?
I'm not sure which question that answered, but, and I mean no disrespect, I was looking for the year that they'd be looking for an elementary school in Essex. Apparently, there's no unanimity of opinion on that. If that's the answer, so be it. We have the answer. And I was looking for a commitment that there would be no request for an operational override in the budget document that was presented for the next five years by the district.
Ms. Weld. This is Caroline Weld, co-chair of the school building committee.
Thank you for asking that, Mr. Furlong. Our...what we really can say at this point, we're working collaboratively with Essex, and we're doing our best to wait to do that project. So at this point, we really can't look into the crystal ball and say...our best intention right now is working with the FinCom in Essex, the Boards of Selectmen there. And speaking for the school committee here, we can't commit to saying that we can't move forward with an operational override. So, thank you.
I think the question...Mr. Furlong's first question was, there seems to be an inconsistency between the Manchester Finance Committee's view that the elementary school in Essex would come online in 2034. Is that also the school committee's plan?
So we had a meeting about this in May, a public meeting, where we...it was a presentation between the Town of Manchester, the Regional School District, and the Town of Essex, where we talked about this exact issue. And what we said was, under scenario one, 2028 would be immediately after this building would be complete, and if you wanted to wait until the high school debt rolls off, that's 2034. Those are the two numbers, because there are a lot of things that are outside of everybody's control. For example, when MSBA might accept you into the pipeline, a lot of communities wait several years. This building was picked in its very first year due to its condition. It's really impossible to say. Furthermore, with regard to any difference, at this point, that decision has not been made, but we simply laid out the options so people could do the financial numbers. And again, with six-year delay, then you would avoid paying for three schools at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Erbus. Further discussion? Yes, way in the back of the cafeteria.
Hi, Eileen Murphy, 3 Andrews Ave. I'd like to ask Ms. Bowden and the school committee if they've made any progress in getting a contract for our teachers? And if not, what sort of impact do you feel that that's going to have on our budget going forward for next year?
Ms. Erdman.
Thank you.
Would you stand, please?
Yes, thank you for asking. Yes, we do have a contract in place, and I don't think we can say anything more about that with regard to Maida. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erdman. Mr. Doan.
Carl Doan, 52 Summer Street, like to move the question.
And that's seconded. All right. As I said earlier, the previous...motion for the previous question is not debatable. If you're in favor of that, when the green light comes on, please press one. And if you're opposed, press two. This is a two-thirds vote. End debate. Apparently, apparently, there's maybe some confusion as to what we were just voting on. This is the motion to cut off debate. So I think we better do that again. I know a lot of people haven't been here before and aren't familiar with the terminology, so...I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? I think that a lot of people haven't been here before and perhaps aren't familiar with the terminology. The motion for the previous question is the motion to cut off debate. And so, since there may have been some confusion about that, I'm going to ask us to vote on it again. So if you're in favor of cutting off debate, this is a two-thirds vote. When the light comes on, please press one. And if you're opposed to ending debate, please press two. And the motion to cut off debate prevails by more than two-thirds. The vote is 528 to 69. So that brings us, then, to Ms. Erdman's original motion, which is to approve the issuance of the debt by the Regional School District contingent on a debt exclusion under Proposition 2.5. Everybody clear what we're voting on? Okay, if you're in favor of that, when the light comes on, please press one. And if you're opposed, press two. And the vote is 647 to 92. It prevails by more than two-thirds. Susan Beckman moves to dissolve the special town meeting, and Arthur Steiner seconds the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare the special town meeting dissolved. Don't forget to return the clickers.